Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councilor Tally, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Norris, and Finance Director Yuha are present.
Hello, my name is Dan Boggs, I'm the Manager of Communications, Community Outreach for Groton Utilities. And it's the time of year again where we start planning the Groton City Brew Run. This year's the fifth annual of the event, held on September 6th, for Saturday after Labor Day. Last year, we had a great event, many of you were there, thank you for helping and participating. We had over 600 participants, which was by far our biggest we've ever had. In order to do this event, we need to ask for the ability to serve alcohol for that one day a year. So that's why I'm here.
Any questions?
My only comment is that the resolution that's in our packet says September 7, 6. So it just needs to be corrected.
September 6th.
It will be corrected from the Mayor Council, it will be corrected from the Mayor Council.
Okay.
Other than that, thank you for all your work, I did volunteer last year, and it is, it's a super awesome event that we have there. And this year, the beach will look even better because we're making all those improvements, so it'll be really cool.
Should be great.
I know you work really hard on that day, so thank you for everything that you do.
Everybody works, you work hard, the mayor works hard, all the volunteers, we do a lot of work for that great day to bring all these people to the city who may not, might not ever get to take a look at the city groth and see what it's all about.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to move this Mayor Council meeting of May 19th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything, motion carries? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Motion right, question for free service, Mayor?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, so I'm here tonight, back last July of 2024, we started tree maintenance at Washington Park. We were working under the former tree warden, and then we were, trees were identified, we got a bid, we got a company in, we did some work late August, early September. Upon getting a new tree warden, there were additional trees identified that were missed. So I'm here today just to finish off this project, it is always budgeted two years ago in CIP. So I'm looking, we're gonna finish up the tree work at another additional $14,600. And all the dead trees, and all the dead wood, and the widow makers, and everything else, low hanging branches will all be cleared up in Washington Park.
We'll go forward for discussions. Councilor Norris?
Where is the additional 14 coming from?
Oh, it's, we had $35,000 budgeted initially, we've only spent 17,000 of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? May I have a motion to move this Mayor Council meeting of May 19th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any motion, House of Representatives?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Highway Department grant writing proposal, Heidi?
Good evening, Council, so I am here this evening to request the issuance of a change order to GZA, who is our engineering consultants that are working on the Shore Ave Sewal project. It's in the amount of $12,000, and this is for a grant writing specialist. We've identified a community investment fund grant with the state of Connecticut with DECD. That grant period opened at the end of April, and the grant is actually, the grant package is due to be submitted by June 6th. So it's a very short timeframe and a very short turnaround for, for getting this package together. Because we are not a recognized municipality, the town of Groton will be applying on our behalf. So we actually need to get this grant package to them, probably about a week to two weeks prior to it being submitted. So they have an opportunity to review what's in that package and make any edits that, that they feel are appropriate.
May I have a motion for discussion, Councilor Sheffield?
Heidi, would there be additional grant, grants writing services, is this for a, just for any additional grants? Or is this for maybe one grant that this 12,000 be applied to?
So right now, we've identified the, so I'll refer to as a CIF grant, the Community Investment Fund. We've identified that as a, a potential for, for funding. So the way I sort of envision this, right now, they are going to provide a package to be submitted specifically for this grant. I would envision that we could most likely use most, if not all, of, of what they provide us to, to apply for, for any other grants for this project.
So this will be a package, so will we need potentially an additional package if this, if it's, if we come up, let's say, short on the financial part of the project? Or would this encompass everything we'll need, basically?
So if you're asking about the amount of funding that we're asking for, we, we are going in with an ask for the, the full cost of the project as we know it right now.
Okay, so that, so this services will take care of that, the full funding of what we're asking?
Should we be successful with that grant?
We won't need to go for another 12,000 for another package, something like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Evan, Mayor Depot?
So if we were to not hire this grant writer, is essentially what we're doing, whose responsibility within the city would it be to complete this type of application?
It would most likely be mine unless the mayor believes there's, there's someone else within the city that, that has that expertise.
And how many of your hours do you think it would take you to do this?
I believe it would be significant, the reason I say that is this grant is, it needs to be crafted in a creative way to meet the needs of this project. I, I would believe that it would be a significant, a significant amount of time, I am not a grant writing specialist, certainly could I put a package together, I, I could put a package together. I believe that this particular grant is significant because right now, it is the one grant we know that is available. And I don't want to say it needs to be perfect, but it needs to be, it, it needs to be incredibly well-written and incredibly well-crafted.
This was a recommended pathway, we do not have a grant writer on board, Heidi is working on it, and she's got a lot of knowledge, but she's never submitted a CIF grant before, actually, no one here has submitted a CIF grant before. And so we felt that it was, so these, the GZA guys have submitted grants before and have been successful, and that's why we decided to go through.
The only reason I'm asking is, you know, I, I think a lot of times we get stuff that we contract out, and I just like to make sure the residents know the reason why this is not something that our staff is really equipped or has the time to do because it's additional and you weren't planning to have this on your plate this year, so it's not really feasible or sensible because our chances are better to win the grant, to be awarded a grant when, if we hire a professional. And $12,000 for that kind of professional grant writer, in my mind, especially the scope of the project is a reasonable amount, so I'm in favor of it. I just want to make sure that the residents understand, like, this is the type of thing that is very sensible to go to a contractor because our chances of success are, are higher and less strain on our staff that wasn't planning on probably maybe spending a week of man-hours putting together a grant.
And it is a very short turnaround time, we only, between the time we, the, the application opened and the time it's due to the town is just about a three-week timeframe. But we are coordinating with, with, with GZA, so, and we're also coordinating with members of the Town Planning Office because they are submitting a CIF grant as well. So there's a planning grant and a capital improvement projects grant, and we're going for the capital grant, they're going for a planning grant.
And do you know when, if we are awarded this, when that announcement period is, or when, when they process those, or is that not a known timeline?
So it's known to the extent that, so we, we submit this to DECD, they do their initial review, and then it goes, there's actually a CIF board, and they don't meet until September 30th. So I believe that should our package get moved to the CIF, CIF board, they would not see that until the 30th of September.
So we won't, the earliest we would know is probably closer to winter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Norris?
Of course, I commend you and the rest of Groton City staff for recognizing the technical aspects of applying for this grant. But the $12,000, I'm wondering, is there in this grant funny, funnies, monies that can be identified for grant management and administrative costs and potentially recoup that $12,000?
So, so there is an opportunity for that, when we, so, so I've done a webinar with DECD, and we actually have our one-on-one scheduled with them this coming Thursday, so those are certainly, we can dig more into those questions. One of the things that was discussed in the webinar is that they, they're, they're looking more for those hard costs, we can include soft costs. But they are looking to fund, you know, really fund those and focus on those hard costs, but absolutely, we can include that as part of, as part of our ask.
Right, please do, because I think you can get up to 10% in administrative and grant management, so maybe worth the question.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Councilor Piazza?
If you'd just clarify for me on, when it says round seven, are there more rounds that are coming out that we're interested in? Or is this just for this project per se?
So, so I, I don't know the exact year of the inception of this fund. I do believe that round seven is the second round in 2025. I believe that this grant goes through 20, is, is funded through, there was like $875 million that was funded through 2030. So I, I don't know how many, how many rounds they were anticipating each year, but I do believe that we're in the second round for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to move this to the special Mayor and Council meeting of May 12th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, any additional discussion? During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The pass is unanimously, okay, we're gonna recess the committee, the whole meeting, and begin the Mayor and Council, the special Mayor and Council meeting. So we are now going to call the special Mayor and Council meeting Monday, May 12th, 2025 to order, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councilor Piazza, Councilor Artali, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Norris, and Finance Director Yuha are present.
Thank you, Councilor Piazza. Will you read the resolution? For the special Mayor and Council meeting? Do you have that?
The copy I have doesn't have the resolution number.
Yeah, we don't have the number. Yeah, we don't have a resolution number.
It's, it's a different document, so in the email she sent us for today's meeting.
May I have a motion to move the resolution? Can we have the, the resolution on page, page 11? Page 11, 39?
I think, yeah, from five, five. Yeah.
Hold on, I'm pulling that out.
We got it, yeah. Resolution is 2505-40.
Thank you.
Ready? Thank you, Mayor, resolution R-25-05-40, therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Council accept and approve a change order with GZA Geo Environmental Incorporated, 35 Nutmeg Drive, Suite 325, Trumbull, Connecticut, for grant writing services for the Shore Avenue Sewal reconstruction project at a cost not to exceed $12,000 and no sense to be paid from the fiscal year 25 Highway Operating Funds, I saw moved.
Second.
The motion is second, we just discussed this, any further discussion? During none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are, I will call the committee, the whole back to order, and we will go to the Groton Utilities Budget Presentation. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
So we're gonna do a very high overview of the electric, water, and sewer budgets. I believe you were sent the presentation for today, all the entire budgets, as well as a link to the UC meeting, which went into a lot more detail with the budget. So I'd like to start off by thanking E, the entire GU Finance team, the general managers, the managers and everyone else that was involved in bringing these budgets together. There's a lot of time spent and a lot of back and forth in trying to keep these budgets as low as possible. So some of the things that we're gonna talk about today, the contributions to the city, the rates, how the revenues were calculated, operational expenses, capital projects, the debt service, and the cash flow. So currently, the electric for the return to the city transfers back 4.1 million to the City General Fund just as a return for owning the electric company. There's also additional cash and non-cash contributions of just under 3 million, which are for rents, portion of the city finance and HR budget, IT services that are provided, free services in the safety program, just to name a few. The total benefit provided by GU to the city is 6.9 million in, in both of those, the return to the city and other contributions. The rates in comparison to investor-owned utility, the electric is 45% or $103 below the benchmark, and that's for a current residential customer that uses around 700 kilowatt-hours, which is a normal usage for electric. Water and sewer are based on a local municipality, similar in nature. That is, the water is 10% or $4.73 below the benchmark with the average use of 500 cubic feet. The sewer is 47% or $37.28 below the benchmark using that same 500 cubic feet. So with the utility budgets, they're built differently than the city budget. The city budget, we go off of expenses, build our revenues, and then we back into the tax number. With the utility budgets, we start with the revenue, build the revenue projections out, because that is all that we have for that based on what we can come up with, what our anticipated usage is for the year, and what the rates that are approved are. And then we go through to our expenditure side, and then look at our cash flow, and that's really the main driver of these budgets is where cash flow ends up to see if it can truly be done. So it's, it's built just a little bit different, but the same concepts apply. So for the electric revenue, the total electric revenue excluding the pass-through is 51 million, which is down 1% or 588,000. This is, this decrease, even though there is a rate increase, is based on an estimated reduction in the usage of an industrial customer in the current year. So that's, even though we did have that rate increase, we are, our projected revenues are gonna be down because of the projected usage decrease. For water, the total revenue is 13.1 million, which is up 2%, or 232,000. Again, there's a small decrease in the projected usage, however, the rate increase exceeded that, which allowed for the revenue to have the increase. The sewer's 4.1, 4.5 million in revenue, or 13% increase, or 512,000. There's a projected increase in usage of 3% as well as a rate increase of 7.3% that was approved. Just keep in mind that, remember, the sewer is city-only, the water does have customers that are outside of the city, that's why the two don't match as far as why the usage changed. For the operating and maintenance expense budget, so in the current budget, for not, non-direct expenses, meaning that, that's not directly to one department, that's solely just for electric, solely just for water or sewer, and there is an allocation factor that is done for these non-direct costs, which is the same that we've been using, 60% electric, 30% water, 10% sewer. Some of the things that are non-direct would be the customer care, the finance and admin, the IT, et cetera, those things that cover all and work for all the three divisions. When we get into the O&M expense budgets, for electric, the budget is 19 million, it's up 3% or 642,000. That is made up of a labor expense increase of five, labor expense of 6 million, which is up 5% or 310,000. This is related to standard wage increases, there's an increase of an FTE in, across, which will be, in one of the ones that was a non-direct, so you'll see that, there's a 60/30 for the one IT increase. And then there was a reallocation, because there was a realignment with the, internally with the general managers, one of the general man, there was one general manager that oversaw all three divisions as far as operations, and then there was a project planning that got consolidated into now a GM of electric and a GM of water sewer. So that, there was a little bit of reallocation of FTEs that created some of that increase in the labor. The non-labor expense is 13 million, which also had a 3%, or had a 3% increase, or roughly 332,000. This is mainly made up of tree trimming and the right-of-way clearing anticipated for the current year, which was a $152,000 increase. The other major portion of that was employee benefit allocation that goes into the non-labor. For the water O&M expense, the budget's 10.6 million, up 3% or 319,000. The labor for the water is 4 million, it's up 4.1% or 160,000, and pretty much the same thing as the electric with the reallocation and the increased one FTE. The non-labor expense is 6.6 million, increase of 2% or 159,000. The main drivers there are the chemical costs, purification costs, and the purchase power, all of those three categories are up around $30,000 each, and then employee benefits up to 65,000. So those are the drivers of the, the water O&M budget. For sewer, the O&M budget's 3.7 million, which is up 6.9% or 237,000. The labor, again, same, same as above, there's some reallocations. The reason why this one had the, the increase as opposed to decrease is because of the change in business development. There was an FT that was a 50/50 that got reallocated to the true 60/30/10 was the main reason there. So that's why this one's up and, and the other, and then the other allocations as well. And then for the non-labor expense is 2.1 million, which is up 3% or 52,000. This is made up of ordinary repairs, increase of 20,000, the maintenance of mains, 10,000. Again, the change of the business development where there was some contributions that were a 50/50 between electric water, went to that 60/30/10 split, just to true it up to keep it consistent. So those are the high-level O&M expense of the budget. From the capital side, the plan for electric is to use 5.75 million of capital. There's non-bonded capital of 5.65 million, including 500,000 funded by the Rate Stabilization Fund. Non-bonded capital is, comes right out of the, the checkbook for the lack of a better. That is money that we haven't bonded, but they are capital projects, so when you see the trucks coming through and those, the equipment, those types of things. There's also an LED conversion project of, that will be funded by the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, or REGI. And then, just because I mentioned the rate stabilization fund that would be using funds out of there, that'll, we estimate the rate stabilizing funds to be at 13.5 million or 4.3 months of power left at CMAC. So that's, that rate stabilization fund is still in good shape with that CMAC. For water, the capital budget is 4.49 million, which includes 255,000 of non-bonded capital. And then with the water, there is still some bonded capital available, which they'll be using 4.2 million of that for current year projects. Sewer will be using, is budgeting 835,000, again, that is all non-bonded capital for, for the sewer. We get into the debt service. So this kind of gives you the overview of those, of the bonds that have, are outstanding currently. So you see total electric division as of 6/30/2025 is 27 mil, just over 27 million, which still includes the 5.4 million of TVC debt that is slowly going away. The water division is just under 41 million, 31.5 of that is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which was for the water treatment plant project. And then the sewer division has 7.8 million of outstanding debt at 6/30/25. So total debt payments between principal and interest for the year will be 4.5 for electric, 3.7 for water, and 900,000 for sewer, so those are payments that are, will be due for debt service. So the main thing, like I talked about at the beginning, is the cash flow. So based on the, the current proposed budget, the net cash flow operations is gonna be in, just a negative, just under 2 million or 1.98 million. The estimated 26 operation cash balance is 15.5 million after we've used that 1.98, which still leaves us 568,000 above the cost of service study recommended minimum cash balance. So therefore, we feel comfortable with having a negative cash flow with electric, it still keeps us above our recommended balance from the cost of study service. For water, the, the proposed cash flow from operations is a negative 1.3 million, which will leave an estimated operation cash balance of 1.5 million, which is 4.4 million below the cost of service recommended minimum cash balance. We've known this, this is kind of a projection that we've had over the last few years, it stems from the water treatment plant project, and the, and the rate increases not quite being enough to keep up with the inflation and everything else. So we, we are monitoring this very closely, and there is, there'll be potentially some recommendations in the future. From the sewer side, the proposed 2026 net cash flow operations is a negative 989,000. Estimated cash operations, the cash balance will be 2.8 million, again, it's 824,000 above the cost of service recommended minimum cash balance. So again, it's above that cost balance, so we are comfortable with having that negative cash flow. So the, the bigger thing there is just the inflation and the rates just kind of haven't stayed in line, but we've been trying to do our best to keep all our expenses down to keep that in line with our current rate schedule. So the proposed 2026 budgets will afford the three divisions to meet debt service requirements and fund growing infrastructure and technology needs, allow for the efficient operation and maintenance of the utilities' distribution systems, support compensation plans sufficient to attract and retain skilled, high-tech workers, and continue to provide highly reliable and responsive service that the customers expect at the rates that are fair, competitive, and viewed as providing value to the customer. So that concludes the very high-level presentation. We do have a lot of the members of the GU here with us, so if there's any specific questions that they need- that they need to get into or or we can go from there.
Thank you, Mayor, um thank you Director Uhaus for going through all that, um. A few questions, the the debt service for TVC, when does that end again? I think I ask this every year because I don't remember, is it twenty nine?
Twenty and twenty nine.
And do we have, do we plan to not take on more debt or do we have a plan for? Because I I know I know that there's a reasonable amount of debt that you want to have, um or what's our plan for that?
So it is currently being evaluated, there is a chance that we will be coming to council for another round of um of debt. We did, we're just finishing up our five-year plan that we did back the last issuance, which included the the big part of was the electric transmission project. So there there is a potential to come back for more, it is being evaluated as the projects and what what for bonding. But yes, there there are limits that you want to try to stay within and to make sure that you're not overbonden.
And then
The biggest chunk of TVC uh bonding is going to be done in twenty eight. And I think uh it's either the end of the first quarter or the second quarter of twenty nine is when it's finally one hundred percent complete.
And then I know um obviously this budget has to get approved by the utility commission and then by the council. Um but also it's highly dependent, it it goes hand in hand with our cost of service study, correct?
Yeah, the cost of service study gives us our projected rates, which is how is how the revenues are generated based on the approved rates and those types of things. However, there are things like we do take assumptions into the cost of service study that may be different from actual once the time comes, so as using inflation, for example, with some of those we may have been using a three percent inflation, however, the inflation increased to seven percent. So there are, it tries to to use that, but again, it it could vary from from the assumptions that are done and that we try to include in there the capital plan, capital work to be done in that cost of service in the projection to make sure we have the rates um calculated correctly.
So if if the council was interested in evaluating the amount of money that gets transferred from the utility to the city, how far in advance would that be a reasonable thing to review?
So um there was discussion at the UC about this the same topic, um there was talks about it. We've what came out of that was we were going to evaluate all of the co the returns to the city. The only one that get is done annually in February based on a resolution is the actual return to the city. But we have, we want to take and look at the entire thing, we want, and there there is a formula that's done for the return to the city that based on the resolution is eighty five percent of the projected revenues to come up with a number that would be the return, however, it can't be less than ninety percent of last year's return to the city nor greater than a hundred and fifty percent of last year, so it's kind, and then we've we've had internal discussions if we just want to to leave it, not increase it or not decrease it. So we've made the decision to just leave it, that calculation is done in February of every year. But it is something that is on our plate to look at before next year's budget, all of those, not only the return to the city, but all of the rents that are being paid and and charges.
Well, and in terms of the multi-year process of everything, would it make the most sense to look at that when we're preparing for the next cost of service study? Rather than pick a random time or like every year?
And and that and that is part of it is that we do want to make sure if there is going to be any significant changes that we do reflect those in the cost of service study so that that again creates an accurate rate.
And when is the next cost of service study due to be done? So fall twenty six?
Yeah, water waters is going on right now, last year we just finished sewer and right after water is done, the next calendar year will be electric.
Perfect, and then I think my last question, so I'm looking at the in the electric budget on uh page five where it lists all the non-cash contributions to the city. Um just picking one of the lines, for example, so like city day is twenty thousand dollars, where is that reflected in this budget? Or is all of this just dumped into the general fund?
Nope, it's reflected within each of the budgets, the electric, the water, and the sewer, that twenty thousand.
No, but I mean in, so this says city day twenty thousand dollars. So if I go to my city, where do I find that in the cost for city day? In this budget, in the city budget?
Not being included in the city budget.
Is utilities cost for their participation in what they provide?
That's, yeah, okay, that's what I wanted to to make sure that makes sense, because if you're looking at these this list, it's not it doesn't have like a similar list in the city budget where it says, yes, we got this from the utility. So this is electric service.
So the these are expenses that are paid directly out of the electric checkbook, water checkbook, and sewer checkbook, they don't come out of the general fund?
Yeah, it never come, it never gets swapped over to the city, it just is.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that I have that straight. And I think that might be my last question. Nope, I think that's my last question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, if you can help me understand this, how do you, if you can, budget for loss of sales of services, like I I see here loss in uh kilowatt per hours or cubic feet of water, that kind of stuff, how is, how do you budget for that?
Aaron, you want, you want to come up and?
Whoever's going to address it, I need you to come up and speak your microphone.
Are you asking how we forecast?
Yeah.
Or what do we do with the actual revenues when they come in?
How do you forecast?
Uh Aaron Brooks, General Manager of Business Development. Um so E does so much of the heavy lifting on the forecasting. Um but we work together and we go through basically the last year's actuals and we forecast off of last year's actuals, um making any adjustments for any known things that we know have occurred within our distribution system.
So when you do your forecast, like I think I saw, for example, um kilowatt per hours was one percent, that went down one percent or something like that. Um but the rate did go up, you did, I'm trying to do this without looking at it, sixteen million or whatever it is. Um so that is you've determined that, hey, potentially we could have a reduction of one percent sale, but we will still generate X number of dollars.
Exactly, yeah, so first we start with what our projected kilowatt hour sales are.
Yep.
And based on current rates, we can then build out our revenue model.
So the other part to that is, is there a policy that GU wants to hold X percent of cash reserves moving year to year?
Well, we'd like to be at our minimum cash balances. Uh which so for electric and sewer, I think we're at, right? So, I mean, yes, we set our minimum cash targets, yes.
Okay, but do you have a policy that says our cash reserve should be X percent of our annual operating?
So I will see, this is based on the cost of the study.
E, I'll get you then.
Sorry.
Okay, um E Sean, Controller of the Geo Finance Department. And uh so I have some first before I answer this question, I have a little bit like kind of um for the prior question for how we projected the revenues. And actually, we track the kilowatt hours by category every month. So when we build up the revenue budget, we look at the all the um the sales data for the last twelve months ended as the December of the uh twenty twenty four. And we look at the last twelve months of the sales data and then uh build up the the model for the next year's budget and um based on the actual the sales data and with the non-change, for example, we know on the trains, some one of the uh major industrial customers, they are having the generator build it up. So we saw the trains of their decrease of their sales, so we adjusted based on our the trains. And uh for example, another uh the residential, we saw the um the apartment, the building, and we know they're going to have some increase of the revenues, the sales. So we added a um based on the best estimate, building adjusted are the uh projections to build up our the uh sales data, the sales model, and applied to all the approved rates, so that the how the revenues, the budget revenues came out.
It it's, this is fascinating to me because it's both the art and the science, so.
You will see, because Aaron's group is tracking all the sales data by each of category, residential, commercial, the industrial, small general, a small general services, large general services, very detailed tracking. So we have our the data set over there for the projections.
Okay.
Yeah, for the second question, the uh the cash, the uh minimal cash balance, so we do have our like we do the uh every three years for each of the division for the uh cost of the study. And we build up that the minimal cash balance based on the um five the categories for, so that the minimal cash balance is made up, for example, the um the one is the operation needs, so you have like the, when you send the bill, utility bills out, and when you collect, there you're usually like the forty five days of the uh cycle, so we have the minimal like the operation cash balance to cover that the forty five days from the send the bill out and till they collect the bills. Another thing, uh the second thing is the capital needs. So when we look at our capital and how much of the depreciation we already depreciated, we try to keep the fifty percent of depreciation of all our the capital to maintain the healthy, the capital on the edge. And to evaluate how much we need to uh replace, so some of the cash balance is built up for the capital needs. And we also look at the um the uh our day services. And we also look at the for the extraordinary items, for example, the storms or the um some outstanding stuff happen or unexpected. So we kind of keep certain amount of our reserve. I think, sorry, this is four items, major items we covered under our minimal cash balance. So every time we do the cost of the study, we will have that they build it up, that is our financial kind of key uh indicator, and we try to maintain, so that's why we, when we do the budget, we always compare our the cash balance compared with our minimal cash, uh the uh requirement to see for our meet that the requirement over there, so so far as Ron already uh mentioned about water is under, that is, we know the reason, and uh electric and sewer were currently above the minimal cash balance. So that should be on from the budget standpoint is kind of healthy.
I can only imagine what your private charts look like.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and then uh thank you Groton Utilities staff for what you do every day, and thanks for coming out tonight. Okay, all right, Ron, we're gonna, we are now going to uh look at the city of Groton budget. And Ron, I'll let you start before uh we open the floor for discussion with with uh city council.
So the only thing that I'll start with, um we did receive so an inquiry with with a bunch of questions on it that was um answered and sent back out to the council last Friday, so hopefully those answered all the question to fulfill that was asked, but if not, please let me know if there's some clar clarification or other things that you need. Other than that, like the we've done, we've all, all the departments have presented. Um so now it's, I guess, up to the council to discuss and kind of see which direction that you want to go.
And then by the charter, uh I have to give this to you guys for a vote on the third Wednesday of the month of May. So that's next, us not Wednesday, Monday, so that's next Monday.
And and if there are any proposed changes, then I will, whatever consensus we get for out of this meeting, I will update the pages and get updates together for you, so you have them prior to Monday.
So with that, I will open the floor for discussion, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor, um I have a handful of questions, first, I uh in our meeting on the fourteenth, on April fourteenth, when HR did their budget, there was a discussion about the overtime line was incorrect and we were going to get new sheets, did we get those?
I was going to do them with the with the updated packet that you're going to get on Monday, with up with the updated sheets.
Did we also update the estimates on that budget sheet?
I will get those, I'll have the HR director make sure that those are updated for you as well, and I'll try to get those too as soon as possible, they have not currently been.
So that was a an error regarding the overtime, it should have been in the part-time and fifteen thousand for that. And then that was brought out in one of the questions and was addressed uh in the question.
Okay, and then um so I did, there was a lot of information that the email that we got with the um the budget clarification questions, but I it I have a few additional questions, um so the the blight, is the blight officer not an employee?
He is an employee, but the blight officer is part-time under uh building and zoning, under Scott Reagan's.
But in the response, it, I believe it stated that it was under contractual services. And there's no employee listed under the um building budget, there's no line for him as an employee under there.
So with with the question on the building and zoning, what happened there was the what got quest, the question on it was the cost center and not an actual budget bucket, and that cost center is made up of the a portion of the full-time employee as well as the blight officer, which is under the part-time employee that goes to that cost center.
Wait, where is, hold on, um that's in the building. So so where is the blight officer's salary?
It is un, it's under, if you flip to page thirty eight, it'll be under the part-time.
Okay, so and that comes out of the zoning budget?
Out of the building budget, yes.
So but the, okay, but there's only three full-time employees listed on page thirty nine.
Correct, the blight officer is not a full-time position.
Right, but don't we usually put part-time employees on this list too?
Not on the FTE.
So the blight officer falls under the building department, but is managed by the police department?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's no nowhere in the police is there money that comes out of the police budget for the blight officer?
Not from salary, I don't know, I mean, there may be some operational small expenses, but
Or anything?
They they do use a city vehicle, that was a police vehicle, but as far as the the cost for the wages, they all come out of the building.
Okay.
Chief, hold on, chief, you want to address that question?
So we uh provide the blight officer with uh the computer, the desk, uh the workspace, and then he has And then he has use of one of our reserve vehicles, has multiple uses, training, evidence, et cetera. But he has use of a vehicle to go and respond to the calls.
Okay. That makes sense. And then under under boards and commissions, I know that we've asked this before, but I just wanted clarification. That budget. It's not that one. Is fifteen thousand dollars for contractual services? Can you elaborate what those contractual services are for boards and commissions?
So this is under the admin section, not the building, right?
Correct.
So that is all for retirement board and actuary services.
In is that a set amount that we know it's going to be fifteen thousand?
No, that's just kind of historically where it kind of comes in. And those costs are split between the the general fund and the utilities based on what, you know, with the valuations and those and the gas we update.
Okay. And then there was some confusion when we did the budget for the planning. The Upper Thames View Park was in the budget for this fiscal year, but is not getting done at all in this fiscal year, correct? Because I thought there was some discussion and I just wanted to clarify it because it was confusing even in my notes.
Engineering.
Is going to be done this fiscal year?
No, no, the for upper, upper themes, upper cost of there's nothing for this year's fiscal. We have an RFP out right now for the ADA accessibility at the lower cost stuff, which depending on how much that comes in, we may encumber that money that was budgeted for the upper cost of to if the lower one comes in more than expected. That was, but as right now, it's the focus is on the lower and the ADA to get from the from Thames Street down to the river.
Okay. Okay. And then is it possible to get from planning and zoning? I I know that they gave us a spreadsheet with some information on it about their projects, but in terms of the, there's only a handful of projects that they're planning for this next fiscal year. Is it possible that the information on what they've done so far, what their next steps are and how they plan to get them completed in the next fiscal year? Because last year and the year before, we have continuously set aside money for planning and zoning. It doesn't all get used and then they ask for more. And I you know, if that's going to be continuously the cycle, we're essentially overtaxing and not managing those projects or shifting them to more manageable projects or some something else useful in that department that that department needs. So I'd like to at least have a plan of how we're going to make sure that that money is spent. Because otherwise, I can't be certain it's going to be spent. So then I have trouble allocating it when I don't know for sure it's going to be spent. And then oh, what is our current fund balance? It doesn't list it in the, I know it says the percentage. But do we have the actual number of what our current?
The undesigned is around five million, which is why we're at like that twenty-five percent. I can get you the exact number of for that.
Is there a reason that we don't put that in the budget? Like as of this date, this is how much we have in the bank?
There's never been a request for it. It's just that, you know, we do, we do our calculation and it's in the the mayor's letter as far as where the the fund balance percentage will be as a percentage of expenditures. But we've never put the actual fund balance in there, but I can get you the an up-to-date.
So when when I look at this number, the fund balance, it says the reserve will be twenty-four point oh six percent, right? Is that that is twenty-four point oh six percent of this proposed budget number of twenty million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars?
Correct. And that's just the projected fund balance number. It's not the act, you know what I mean? It's based on using, based on taking into account what we're going to use of of fund balance in this budget and then other assumptions that are that are used to kind of come up with that projection.
What are those assumptions?
So we look at the previous year is ending fund balance where it came in that. So for this budget period, it would have been fiscal year twenty-four's where it came in there. We project out that expenditures are going to be fully expended because it is an unknown. We take into account any revenue streams that we if we try to budget the revenue thinking that it's going to come in on on target. However, there are things that will come in unexpectedly or expectedly, but that are not budgeted. For example, the enterprise zone grant. So that got taken into being able to use that monies that came in for that in into that projection as well. So there's just assumptions that we see when we're putting the budget together that we use to to make sure we try to get as close to a good estimate as possible. But again, like from the expenditure side, we don't want, don't, we're going to assume because at as of December, we've only spent twenty-five percent of the budget. We're not going to say, okay, let's just assume twenty-five, fifty percent of the budget is going to be spent. We just assume that all that's going to be spent. So that way we don't underestimate and cut ourselves short with the fund balance. Because it is, the fund balance is tough. It seems like a lot here with that twenty-five percent that is based on rating agencies. And the reason why they why they like that us to be higher is kind of twofold. One, we have two significant taxpayers and the concentration of taxes is one of them. And then also, we're only a twenty million dollar budget. And I don't want to sound lightly twenty million, but when you look at a lot of municipalities, you have the board of head, you have, so it's, there are a lot, that expenditure is a lot bigger number, which leaves a lot bigger fund balance sitting there.
And then I I have a question about elections because we have elections every year, but we don't have expenses under elections every year. So for example, this past year was a presidential election, not, we didn't have town or city elections. But did we not still have to spend money for that election? Where does that money come from?
That that's all handled by the town. So the the when there's an election in the budget, those are solely just for city elections.
Okay, so my next question is, the last time we had one, our expenses were six thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, but we're budgeting fifteen thousand. Is what what is that expected for?
So if you recall, the last election was the first time that it was held in a November in conjunction with the town election. So therefore, there was a split cost of that between the town and the city and not, we didn't really know what it was. So obviously, that was a lot lower than historical. However, and the mayor or Danny can speak to this probably more. However, in the current year's budget, we have that number. But then if there was to be a primary, we wanted to make sure that was covered. Because if there's a primary, that could potentially be all city if there's not a town one. So it was just to make sure that we had money set aside for the election and anything that potentially could come our way. Like I said, if Danny, if you want to add more to that or the mayor, feel free.
No, that's accurate.
So if we okay, that's, that's fine. And then can you elaborate for me? I'm sorry, I'm back in the administration budget on page twenty-two, under contractual services, what that number is for, what falls under that?
I believe that's mainly attorney fees and and legal costs.
So I I looked at the last five years of that and in, starting in fiscal year ending twenty twenty, it was thirty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-eight. The next year it was thirty-six thousand, six thirty-six. The following is twenty-two thousand, one forty-six. Fiscal year ending twenty-three, it was fifty-six thousand, one forty-four. And then as is on this budget, last fiscal year was forty-two thousand, nine ninety-six. So the average over those five years was thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Is there some reason we're expecting it to shoot up to seventy-two thousand?
And Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this year it is already potentially going over budget based on.
Over and we're going to go a little more over on this line item because of individual or individuals that have been filing complaints and FOIA and FOIA court and things like that are expenses. And there is a projection that we think this is going to continue into the next couple of years. And that's why we have it as high as we do.
So these, all of the legal fees for FOIA falls under this line?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we only charge for FOIA requests, we only charge for copies of documents, right? We can't, we don't, there's no fee. You can't charge a fee for the FOIA request. So there's no recouping of that cost.
So hard copies, if somebody want, for example, the day just came in and wanted to take multiple pictures. So if we do that, we charge twenty dollars to bring your camera in and take multiple pictures. If you get a thumb drive, I think that's nine dollars. Is that what it is? And then hard copy pages, if it isn't a page, we cannot recoup people's cost salaries. You cannot, even the amount of time that it takes us to redact documents, when we have to redact documents, you you can't even get that time back. Even when the police have to redact, redact body cam footage, you can't charge for that at this point.
Okay. I think those are all my questions for now.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Norris.
Allow me to say thank you for getting those questions to me as quick as possible. My bad. Because the other councillors had no idea was going to send out that request. So I'm not even quite sure they had time to read it, but thank you very much. Just comments really is, I have I question if we have an overtime line and we are short-staffed in full-time folks, but we never use the overtime line. That kind of tells me, do we really need it? Because if we're full-staffed, we may, whatever task that come up could be handled by a full staff. As well as in HR, I can appreciate that we weren't full-staffed. So we had to find a part-time person. But now we are fully staffed. So why do we can still need a part-time person?
We're not fully staffed. I have a part-time HR director. My full-time HR director does not start until three June. You don't know that yet because I haven't brought her to you in the at an upcoming COW, which will be the COW at the end of the month. We have not filled the second HR generalist position. And so when those two get filled, it's going to take them time to get up to speed to learn what they need to do for here. In the meantime, there's still a backlog of things. And like was said, here, we have part-time people that are coming in, you know, for parks and rec and those kind of things, and all those records have to be done. And so that's why we need the the part, the the part-time support in HR until such time that the HR director is fully up to speed and the new HR generalist is fully up to speed to bring us up to, because we still have backlogs of things that need to be done. Once, once they are fully up to speed, I do expect the part-time person, once they're used for this year, that we shouldn't have to use them next year.
I I thank you for that explanation. The other thing is so when I looked at page thirty-seven of the budget book and it's building and zoning, and I went down to the cost center, zero zero three zoning, what is in that line?
What is in that is a portion of the building officials' wages, a portion of the maybe some of the assistant builder. I think it's just the building official and the blight officer. Would it happen? And I think why the estimate was low, I'm going to have to double check when when a new person starts and what, I should say starts, but transitions over sometimes the GL codes that get put in for their defaults are the same allocation. So I believe that's why the estimate is low, but it truly is just wages that are in that zoning line. If you're looking at like why the estimate is only at the seventy-three thousand for the current year, I believe when Scott did his projections, he just grabbed from Springbrook and just rolled, carried it forward.
Okay. All right.
And then I think that's why you'll see that building inspection is is a little bit high. Because I think there's more allocated back up to that building inspection.
And then I guess the last thing is with planning, when I look at materials and supplies, and I calculate out buying a box of white paper and I calculate out I would say average cost for file cabinets. And then I come up with a wacky number of making copies that, which I know is impossible. We're charging ourselves ten cents a copy. We're still looking at like forty thousand additional copies. That sounds like an awful lot. So I'm wondering, is that a real expectation of what we're going to purchase for file cabinets? What we are going to buy for re fifty, forty thousand sheets of paper and make that much copies? Because that line went up significantly. And and it's really just a rhetorical question at this point, not looking for an answer. But that's the kind of stuff that makes me go, wait a minute, this, there's got to be more in that picture that, you know, someone's forgetting or needs to clarify. That that's all I, where I was coming from with with that.
So I can just read what's in her budget description. I can't speak to how it was, how it was made. There was one of the off-expense and advertising line that did increase by five thousand. And it has legal advertising materials for community workshops, file organization materials is what the, but it doesn't give a breakdown for each of those, but those, that's just what's in the description for that.
And then the last thing, I have really good explanation, but I kind of need to hear it again without reading it. Planning and zoning contract services. The fiscal year twenty-six budget request is two nineteen-five. And I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the purpose for such a large increase. An explanation.
Did you get the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, because the spreadsheet has what those costs are. So it's a hundred thirty for the ADA construction and contract administration, legal costs for ZBA. So it's a hundred and thirty for the ADA construction and contract administration, legal costs for ZBA, legal costs for uh planning and zoning appeal going through litigation, upper things you design, uh renderer for the, to illustrate zoning reforms and retype and reformat zoning regulations.
So here's the reason why I ask, to, does everything you just mentioned need to happen in fiscal year twenty-six?
Well, it's, most of it does. I mean, a hundred and thirty thousand definitely does, the legal costs definitely do. The renderer is to, is to move forth uh things that were, uh projects she's trying to get done. And then zoning regulations, currently we don't have the staff to do that.
Here, here's the reason why I ask, um is the story I tell myself is that there are some wishes, projects, ideas that I hear during the budget process from planning and zoning that actually either don't get happened, don't get happened, don't happen. Um and I'm wondering, is it because we don't have enough staff? So there's not enough time, so they don't, they don't get it done? So we kinda just keep rolling into next year? But we also keep adding projects and ideas and thoughts?
Well, it's not unlike what the deputy mayor was talking about.
So that's why I'm like, do, do these really need to get done? Is there things in there that we can say, okay, let's put a pin in, I don't know what it is, that entire two nineteen? You know, can we put a pin in this and not budget it, budget? I'm having a hard time talking tonight. Budget for in twenty-six and look, okay, but let's lock it in for twenty-seven. Ju- just a thought, I mean, again, it's um doesn't warrant an answer, it's just, you know, or should we be thinking, wait a minute, maybe we need a part-time person in planning and zoning? And do we find twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars to bring in a part-time person that's gonna work twenty, twenty-five hours a week? Just conversation. Cuz I know they work hard, they do. Well, she works hard.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So the plan currently in the budget is to use one point five million of the reserve fund, which would bring us to twenty-four point oh six percent in reserves. And the recommended amount is twenty to twenty-five percent, correct? And last year we were at twenty-two and a half?
I forgot what it was last year, but it was down.
Twenty-two point eight four was what we planned on from the mayor's budget. My question is, what would be the effect if we were to use the same amount of reserve as we did last year, one point nine? It would put us, I think, around twenty-three percent.
So Mayor, I don't know if you wanna take per the charter as to what can be changed from the mayor budget to the council budget?
So let me answer, I'm gonna answer your question one way and then I'm gonna give you another answer from the charter. So we looked at this budget. I went back, we had three, four iterations, some departments had five iterations. And, and uh Ron came to me with this, with an increase to take to uh four point one-one. And I said, you know, if we went to, we're one point five and went to one point nine, what would that do? And we could have went and taken more out, the problem is if you take that money and you end up using every bit of it, you are gonna be in a hurt locker next year for the budget. And I'm not gonna do that to the next mayor, I'm not gonna do it. I could've come in and we could've come in with a zero increase on this, but it would've put whoever's gonna be in his seat next year and the council in a position where they would've been struggling financially. I'm not going to do that. In addition, if you go into the charter, charter says for the purposes of, so do we, uh do, let me just read the whole paragraph. In a duly called meeting at the mayor and council to be held no later than third Monday of May, the council shall approve the budget. The council shall have the authority to revise proposed budget by increasing or decreasing the amount of budget line items. For purposes of this article, the term budget categories shall mean the various proposed appropriations for various departments and expenditures as contained in the published notice of the annual budget meeting. For purposes of this article, the term budget line items shall mean the detailed itemization of all expenditures within budget categories. And then it goes on, if no budget is approved by the council, the mayor's original proposed budget shall be submitted to the electors and qualified citizens of the city for their approval at the annual city budget meeting. So this talks about council has authorization to address expenditures, but not for revenue. And that's why revenue has not been addressed in the past.
Okay, so interesting. Um and then when it comes to the contingency, I, I know that I think in the answers to our questions, it said the contingency has not been increased in um since twenty-twelve, I think it said? Is that right?
Cor- correct. It was a hundred, it was a hundred thousand in twenty-twelve, it went up to the one fifteen. And it's kind of been there.
And, and I think, when did you say the last time we spent money out of there was?
It was actually last year, we had spent um ninety, nine thousand five hundred dollars for the Lake George site assessment that came up, that to do the soil testing. Um so that was in twenty twenty-four. Uh there, there hasn't, prior to that was twenty eighteen, we had a municipal building space study done and some customer service training. Those things were not budgeted for twenty seventeen. We, that was when we did the wastewater feasibility study, when sewer was still in the general fund. So that wasn't a budget for a line item, we used the contingency for that along with going out for an RFP for the investment advisor for the pension and the OPEB funds. And then back in twenty sixteen, there was some used for one oh eight Thame Street Engineering and again, another portion of that wastewater feasibility study when that first started. So in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we, we're, we're using a portion of it. And then we haven't had to in the last few years, and then last year, like I said, we had that site, site assessment for Lake George that we used it for.
Now, for a normal, for a budget in general, I know, cuz when, when we approve projects, there's usually a five or ten percent contingency on that. Obviously, that's a large number for our budget, but is there a standard practice percentage that the contingency should be?
Not that I'm aware of offhand, like as far as a percentage of the budget, like if we have a twenty million dollar budget, should it be the ten percent or two hundred thousand budgeted for? Um I don't know, I can look into that, I'm, I'm not aware of one. I mean, I think this is just that line item that want, something that's unforeseen comes up.
Right.
And we don't have it budgeted for, and if we don't have a contingency line and that were to happen, we would have to go through the whole process right up through a Freeman meeting to get those additional funds released in order to get that unforeseen. Done, or try to re, rework the budget internally and try to move things around and see, cut other things out in order to get that emergency. So I believe that's why it's always just been carried in there and we've, as I said, we've never exceeded it, so I, I've never, I, I shouldn't say that. There was a time back in twenty-eleven where, where, where it was, it was four hundred and twenty-three thousand that was spent out of the contingency. And that was when properties were being purchased, that came out of the general fund. So um but other than that, it's never exceeded that dollar amount, so that's why I've never, from my standpoint, I've never changed it from a budget, we just kinda left it status quo cuz we haven't had anything in excess.
My, my main concern with that is in terms of the volatility of state and federal funding, I feel like it might be wise for that number to be higher. Because if something happens and we're counting on that kind of money, rather than have to go back to the Freeman, we could have more, or at least, at least enough to make a plan or to, for how to fix that or.
So, so to answer that question, I don't, I don't know if this is gonna be a good or a bad thing. We don't receive a lot of federal funding unless it's, unless it's grants that we apply for. Me, meaning, I mean, our, obviously we received the ARPA funding, which was something that came out across the board. The, the last big, like from a federal standpoint, in twenty twenty-four, we received the, the fire grant. If you recall, they replaced, it was a, a, a group grant that we, that we were the host of the grant for, for all of the local fire departments to purchase new radios. And I believe that was seven hundred and some odd thousand, but that was something that we actually had to apply for in order to get. So there's, from a federal standpoint. And then the, the other big one that we did receive back when the wastewater treatment plant, or the water treatment plant was being done, there was that grant that um we received, that proportion of that was federal as well um to offset that loan. But for the most part, we don't receive just off, I mean, we get some JAG grant money that's federal and some, some other things. The, and then from a state standpoint, um it's, you know, the, the town aid road, this enterprise zone grant now that will, that will be received for the next five years based on a, a building that Electric Boat um put up. But again, with that one, there is just a pool of money that the state has set aside and it depends on what applications they receive. Obviously, we probably, meaning the city and the town took up a big piece of that pool based on what was in the enterprise zone. So as you can see in my comment, we did only receive just under ninety percent of what that was, our request was, that fifty percent of the piece that um the state would be responsible for. So I don't foresee those going away, I mean, obviously, anything can go away. Um so that would, that would be one, and that's again, why we don't really budget for that one, because again, it could vary. So if, if there's another enterprise owner, another community that has a similar project or even bigger, that percentage is gonna drop down even more potentially. So I guess, like I said, it's a good and a bad thing. It's good because we're, we don't have anything to lose, but it's bad that we don't have anything to lose.
Okay, and one, to go back to what the mayor said about the undesignated fund balance, can you explain again how using more of the fund balance has any effect on the budget? On, on how the budget is spent?
So it doesn't affect how the, the expenditure side? What it is, is a shortfall of revenue coming in. You're just gonna say, instead of, so for this year's budget, we're using the one point five million of fund balance? If we said we weren't gonna do that, in theory, the, the taxes would increase by one point five million. So what that does is essentially reduce the, the tax budget line that's needed for, from the taxes. Um but it's zero, you'll see it's zero in the estimate because you're using that fund balance, there's no real money coming in.
Right, but I mean the from what the mayor said, the intent was to keep it at one point five and not increase to one point nine because of some, because of some effect on the future
So.
budget, I guess I'm asking for, to elaborate on how that
So.
is connected, because I don't see those two things being connected at all. If we use reserve fund balance, I understand it lowers the reserve fund and it will essentially cut the increase for this year in half. How does that have anything to do with how tight the budget is or how the budget is spent for the next year or any of those things?
So what, what that, and I, I may not have been very de- overly detailed in, because that was one of the questions um that was asked and kind of answered as far as how do you project that, that out? So it is done on every year, there is no projection for that. In theory, if we were to have used the one point nine and the budget comes in, we only receive the revenue that was budgeted for and we spend every expenditure, there's no more fund balance to use. That's where it affects next year's budget, that you're now gonna move one point five million up into taxes. So by leaving that a little bit higher, next year would allow you or the mayor or, you know, the decision-maker to potentially, there is a little bit of room that, okay, we're at twenty-four now, everything worked out, so let's move it down to twenty percent and use a little bit of fund balance to help offset the tax increase that would potentially happen next year. So that's, that's where that affects, is if you, once you start using it up, then you get to a point where there's no more to use and now you're making up one point five million in just taxes. Unless there's another revenue stream that comes in, obviously.
We are currently in year two of the enterprise account. So what does that mean? For five years, EV pays twenty percent on all their properties that were built in the enterprise zone. The state is supposed to give us, is supposed to provide that other uh eighty percent, but they don't always do that, you can't guarantee that that's gonna happen. And so our revenues, we had high revenues coming in from uh the building fees, permit fees. Uh but now we're back to what it was pre uh starting to build and the expenses are going up, the revenue didn't go up. And so you have to take that into account and look at what's gonna happen. So it is tw- it is twenty percent for five years and then it pops up to a hundred percent. But that's not gonna get us there until twenty-eight or so. Whenever the five years is. Have three more years after this.
Okay, so, so the question was asked, um and you know, what's the projected five-year forecast of the, the fund balance? And the, the answer that came back wasn't really, it wasn't like a five-year projection. So do we, are we, so if we use the one point five this year, is there a plan for how much we think we're gonna use next year and the following year? Are we, what is the thought process on that?
And, and that's why my answer was, it is a year-to-year. There is not a fi- five-year projection for this because we can't predict how the budget's gonna come in and we're currently at, on the high side of our twenty-five percent. So again, like I said, if, if, if mayor wants to reduce that num- that percentage, they feel comfortable bringing it down to the twenty percent in a budget, then we would do that in the next years and decrease that down. And then again, it all depends on the previous year revenues versus expenditures. So there really isn't a five-year plan, it's not like we have thirty percent in fund balance and we say we wanna get it over the next five years down to twenty percent and here's how we're gonna do it. It's truly looked at every year. So there is no five-year plan.
Right, but so I guess to me, it kinda doesn't make sense or, because if we, last year we were at twenty-two point eight-five or whatever, even if we did use more fund balance, we're still increasing the percentage that we have in the bank. So I know, obviously, if we come in right on target, you know, the goal would be to build a budget that is balanced. But at, you know, even at twenty-three percent, we're right in the middle of that twenty-twenty-five target, it still gives us wiggle room if we aren't able to uh trim the budget in other areas or um you know, I just, it, it's difficult, I know that the town is gonna be increasing taxes and I, every year, obviously, our portion of that is smaller, but yeah, I'm just looking at, like, what makes sense or what our goal, should we not have a goal of what that percent should be? Do we want to get it to twenty-five percent? Do we want to make a plan to get it to twenty-five percent?
So my recommendation to the mayor is to always keep it at the high side of the twenty-five percent just because of unknowns. It's just where they're, they're looking for it. The mayor could make the decision to bring it down to twenty percent, the mayor could make the decision, which I would advise completely and fight back on to bring it down to. which I would advise completely and fight back on to bring it down to the fifteen percent, which is the standard for a large municipality is normally fifteen to eighteen percent of expenditures. Again, because you're looking at a larger expenditure number, which means that fund balance is larger. But in our case, because we're small and that concentration of taxes, they want it higher, so I just, I'm conservative by nature, like to leave that number up. But again, that's, at the end of the day, that is the mayor's decision as to what percentage.
When I first got here, seventeen, our bond rating had been reduced because of the eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollar reduction from the town for roads and highways. And in the first year, first, I think it was in the first year, maybe eighteen months, we went to try to get the bond rating increased. Came out with the policies, talked about what we were trying to do. And they did not increase our bond rating at the time because I had not, we, the policies that I put out and that we put out together had not been in place long enough for them to get a good feeling. Plus, they had the issue that most of our funds are coming to major sources. When was it, a couple of years ago, we went for a reevaluation and based on the policies that we have. And part of that is keeping fund balance at the high level of the twenty to twenty-five, got us to increase our bond rating. And that pays off in the future for future expenditures that we're going to do for bonds and the payment of bonds. So that's, you know, there's a lot of things that you got to take into account when you're looking at the finances. And it's not just year to year, there's also long-term things that you have to look at. And we look, this budget was looked at very hard. And we looked at this several times and we had people cut, we had people that had come in with a zero, had them cut and go negative so that we could get you the, the budget that you now have in front of. So it wasn't frivolous, it wasn't that we didn't pay attention, it wasn't that we didn't take these things into account. And it's not that we're trying to raise taxes just in case. It is because this is what it costs for a continuation budget. Any other question or comments, Councilor Norris?
What, thank you for explaining all of that. Not only was it amusing to our ears, but to residents that are listening also to hear ins and outs of what we have to do. But Mayor, you hit it right on the head. We kind of do, in your minds, have a five-year forecast. You already know that in three years, we're going to lose X thousands of dollars. We didn't know that. So what I'm saying, what's the five-year forecast? That's what I'm asking. What are you projecting our revenue will be in the next five years or so? You already said, we're going to lose some money, I'm not quite sure that's going to be made up or not. So then I say to myself, then isn't the time now to be creative? Whatever that means, with expenditures or revenue. So the pain, so to speak, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty is not as impactful as it could be if we don't tighten our belts now. Because, and I understand the cash reserve, fund balance and all that kind of one, so it's like kicking it down, kicking the can down the street unless you're only using that or majority of it for CIP one-time expenditures. If you're using it for operational, you're just doomed down the road. So that's where I'm just coming from is, we kind of know where we're heading. Is it possible for every hundred thousand dollars we can cut out of this year's budget, we can mitigate the expenses for the next four years? It just makes that pain a little less in twenty-nine and thirty. Especially if you're saying we're losing these thousands of dollars.
So the twenty thousand, the twenty percent rather, from the tax base for building six hundred, six oh four, six oh five in the support buildings, that's going to stay the same. And then at the end of the five years, then that'll go up to a hundred percent. And you'll get a hundred percent of that tax base. And then that will be probably a pretty good year if it, if it all comes in. In the meantime, we still have expenses that are going to go up, they're going to go up due to contracts, contracts and things like that. But my point is, that's why I want to leave the fund balance higher so that if you have to, to, over the next two or three years, come down to twenty-three or twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two, you can do that and you've still got a decent fund balance. And your bond rating is probably not going to be impacted negatively. And you can still pay the bills, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Deputy Mayor Depot.
So I, I do have some changes that I would like to propose to the budget. But I kind of need to process all the information I just got. I. And I know last year, I think we did it at the meeting we voted at. So I don't, I'm not intentionally going to wait till that meeting, but like I might, if I can put it all together tomorrow and maybe send it in so that at least it can be reviewed. Or I don't know how the other councillors feel if they have edits that they would like to make or input.
Well, I need, I need, what I need to understand is, is that in addition to this? Or?
Oh, let me explain. These, what I said were not recommendations.
Okay, you were just asking what ifs.
Exactly.
Okay, but yours is going to be a real cut recommendation.
Yes.
Which is fine, the only, which, again, we can do it, that if you get them to us before, I mean, I just, I probably won't update all of the budget pages for them because.
No, 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 but it will allow the resolution to have the optional, or at least be aware that there's going to be a second option.
So the way that the resolution is written, it just has approving the city council.
Okay.
Right.
Budget, it doesn't have a number in it, it does, if I recall, and it just says that this is your budget. And then when we do the budget book, we update it based on those changes. We add it aware as, that's not in the normal, in the resolution, which we could add it in on the night of the meeting. That shows the council changes. So that's in the budget book that is then goes to the Freeman, it has that additional page in there. That shows what the city council changed from the mayor's original budget. So yeah, if we don't have a consensus tonight, the only thing was if we had a consensus tonight, what I was going to do is go ahead and update all of the pages, so you would have had them for next Monday, just, but if, if we're not, it sounds like we're not out there, which is fine. And then we can just, if you want to send them in. But if not, we can just do proposals.
If you can send them in to me or to me and Ron, then I will get them to the council. But the council, you cannot respond to all, you cannot discuss this because then that becomes an illegal meeting. So you will have to take the information that gets sent to us and then gets distributed to you and then we'll need to discuss it on Monday night. Is that, everybody clear on that?
Yeah, I was just trying to, I was just trying to lighten the load for staff because I know that's a pain to change stuff.
Yeah, no, like I said, I was just, if we had a consensus tonight, then I was just going to have it updated so that way you guys would have it on Friday before Monday's meeting, but if we're not at that point, it's fine. And it'll just, they'll just, the whole buck will get updated following whatever decisions are made.
Okay, and is it, is it possible to get, did you, you said that the HR estimates were updated?
They have been, I will work with Linda to get that from her. And I will at least get that page out to you, the HR with the, with the, the part-time and the part-time spot and whatever her estimations are updated. Are there any other ones that you would like to see that?
What other asks does the council have?
And then I do have, I do have the notes about projects for, and Mayor, that will be one, we can talk tomorrow and then you can take that one. And I do have the HR budget and estimates. And then any projects that can be moved to twenty twenty-seven from the planning and zoning or part-time person. So those are the three notes that I have at this point.
I think that's it.
And we'll get that information to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion from the council? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for all your hard work.
I will take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred and six. Discuss personnel, which department to include mayor and council and Chief Burke.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of the second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we are in executive session, there'll be no action coming out of executive session.